Hello, can everybody hear me? Can you hear me in the back there?
Yeah.
Wait, you can hear me? Alright, great. Okay, candidates, please come up onto the stage. Be careful, there's some wires up here when you walk up here. And Barbara, Barbara Bree. Alright, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to the Candidates Debate for District One City Council Seat. My name is Steve Haskins, I'm President of the La Jolla Town Council. The Town Council was founded in 1915 and is the only La Jolla civic organization that covers everything that can happen in La Jolla and all the needs of the residents and businesses anywhere in La Jolla. And we're glad to have you here. Uh, I think this is gonna be exciting, there's some good questions from what I hear that will be asked of the candidate. Now I'd like to introduce, uh, the co-sponsor of the event, Terry Hoskins, represents the San Diego Police Officers Association, and he'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the San Diego Police Officers Association and our membership, we'd like to thank you for attending tonight. From the perspective of law enforcement, we believe it has endured a number of challenges over the past couple of years, both locally and throughout our nation. It's clear that public safety is on the mind of everyone, the public, and they're turning to the elected officials for positive leadership on this issue. We hope this forum will provide these candidates with the opportunity to share their vision about the cities generally and public safety specifically. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry. Now I'd like to introduce our moderator, Phyllis Pfeifer. Phyllis has come full circle as publisher of the La Jolla Light, where she started her newspaper career in the 1970s, here back when La Jolla was paradise. She is also publisher of eight other papers, as you can see, I grew up here. Publisher of eight other papers, as President of the Union Tribune Community Press, she oversees newspapers as far north as Encinitas and all the way to Ramona. Phyllis left the Light almost thirty years ago to become General Manager of Los Angeles Times San Diego Edition, excellent newspaper. After the Times closed in San Diego, Phyllis headed north to run the Marin Independent Journal. Prior to moving back to La Jolla, she was Senior Executive at San Francisco Chronicle. In addition to running the community newspapers, Phyllis is the founding Chair of the La Jolla Community Foundation. And I also have a little thing I can tell you about Phyllis, because back in the seventies, when I had a tremendous head of curly hair, uh, I was on the Town Council, I was the youngest member at the time, and I remember that's when Phyllis had come into town to run the La Jolla Light. So I guess we've both come full circle in a way. Please, everyone, let's give a hand for Phyllis Pfeifer.
(applause) He had long hair and mine was down to my waist at that time. But I'm gonna one-up him, because La Jolla Light was founded in 1913, and we've been covering city council elections since the new charter in 1931, where we formed the manager, uh, the mayor, uh, city council form of government. And this year, I'm really excited, because we have three extraordinary candidates. La Jolla would be well-served if any of them were elected. And I think that that's pretty special and pretty unusual. And here is one of your first times to meet with them, and I'm sure you will be meeting them over the next year before the election, but we are very, very fortunate to have them here. And I've asked them to sit in alphabetical order, because I'm going to be doing rotation through alphabetical order. If they're on the right, the left, it does not reflect a political persuasion. I am thrilled that Donald Trump is not here tonight. And so I'm gonna start with Barbara Bree, then Ray Ellis, and Joe Lucavo. And now I'm gonna explain the rules of the road. We have a timekeeper who sits in the front, and this is for the candidates as well as the audience. There will be timed responses. Our timekeeper will raise a yellow, where you have thirty seconds left, and a red when it is time to stop. So, how this is going to work is that each candidate will make an opening statement. It will be two minutes, I will call on them in alphabetical order. Then we have prepared questions from the sponsors, so the Town Council, the Police Officers Association, and the La Jolla Light have prepared questions. And then we have questions from readers and the audience, that we're going to move into that area. Those questions, the sponsor questions, as well as the reader and audience questions, the response will be one minute each. Two minutes for your opening statement, one minute for each of your questions. We will permit a thirty-second rebuttal if any of the candidates mention another candidate. So if you don't want somebody hogging the floor, that means don't mention them, because otherwise they get thirty seconds more to speak. And then in the end, we are going to have closing remarks that will be two minutes apiece for each of the candidates. And I will do that in reverse alphabetical order. And each of the questions, if I can keep track of this, and if not, you can all yell at me if I'm not in the right order, I'm gonna rotate the alphabetical order, because Ray is always in the middle. And he said that's okay, because he sees the middle of the road, so... Here we go. So, I'm gonna start with the Town Council questions, that were provided by Steve Haskins and his, um, organization. The first is...
(inaudible)
Remember, I started in the seventies, so I have kind of an age-related issue here. So, opening statements, Barbara Bree, you go first.
Good evening, I'm Barbara Bree. I've been an entrepreneur, a journalist, a teacher, a mom, a wife, an entrepreneur, a community volunteer, and a grandma. And running for city council, because I love our community, and I wanna help keep it safe, clean, and prosperous. D1 includes La Jolla, University City, Carmel Valley, and UCSD, one of our world's great research universities. We're the heart of our region's high-tech and biotech industries, and they are creating the good jobs of the future that we need if we're going to be able to invest in keeping our community safe and clean. My mom is my role model. Because of her, I believed I could succeed in the business world, and I earned an MBA from Harvard. I've lived here for thirty-five years, my daughters Sarah and Rachel grew up here, and my grandson Colton is growing up here. I was on the founding management team of ProFlowers.com, which started in a small office on Gerard Avenue in 1998, and eventually employed hundreds of San Diegans. But most importantly, I served on, I served as the team manager of both my daughters' La Jolla Bobby Sox softball teams. I'm honored to have a broad range of support, high-tech leaders like Andrew Verterbi and Erwin Jacobs, the co-founders of Qualcomm, elected officials like Tony Atkins, small business owners like Brian Miller of Geppetto's Toy Store, and community leaders in all parts of the district. I live in La Jolla, and I'm concerned, like all of you, with mansionization, short-term vacation rentals, and keeping our beaches safe and clean. I'm also concerned about the increase that the water department, the forty percent increase that the water department wants to impose on our rates. So tonight, I say, no rate increase until we have an independent audit of the water department.
Thank you very much, Barbara.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ray Ellis, and first of all, I'd like to thank the POA and the La Jolla Town Council and the Light for putting this event together. But I'd really like to thank all of you for being here, for taking the time out of your busy schedules to join us this evening, because in the final analysis, this isn't about the three of us, it's about you. It's about you, and your families, and your neighborhoods, and choosing the right council member to move forward in 2016. Uh, I'd like to introduce my wife Gina, uh, who's my partner and source of encouragement during this process, and my oldest son Matthew and his wife Elena. So again, thank you for being here. You know, I came to San Diego in 1987, uh, because I wanted to raise my family here and start a business. So I literally started a business out of my garage, put every nickel we had, cashed in the 401K. Fast forward fifteen years, we've got over a hundred and eighty employees, customers, and offices nationwide. So I know what it takes to start and grow a small business. I know what the environment needs to be for the business community, so they can grow and flourish here in San Diego, and I wanna take, take that experience to city council. But I care deeply about San Diego, and it's been good to be in my family. For over twenty-five years, I've been volunteering in the community on tough issues like child abuse with Voices for Children, homelessness with Second Chance, uh, working on the environment to make sure we have clean water and air with Equinox Center, and I serve on my local community planning board. That's why I am a nonpartisan problem solver, and I've been supported by, endorsed by the mayor, who's a Republican, uh, former city council president Tony Young, uh, a Democrat, and environmental leader Lonnie Luttor is an independent. I wanna bring that common sense reform that we're doing, we need to continue that at City Hall to address our water, make sure we repair our streets and infrastructure, make sure we've got a growing economy, and we also need to make sure we're properly funding police and fire. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, I wanna thank the POA, the Town Council, La Jolla Light for sponsoring tonight, the fellows for moderating, and I wanna thank my wife for thirty-five years and my two daughters for the love and support, and I also wanna thank all of you for taking the time to come out to this hot, humid night to listen to us talk. I'm a native San Diegan, I graduated from San Diego State with a civil engineering degree, my wife and I have been in District One now for thirty years, and my wife is a kindergarten teacher at Bird Rock Elementary. I'm running because District One needs strong leadership, with somebody who has the right experience to step in the job and hit the job, and hit the ground running. For over ten years, I've been working in Bird Rock, in La Jolla, in District One, and city, citywide, for issues that you care about, answering your questions, convening community meetings, getting results done. That's the kind of direct, uh, leadership that you need in this county.
Who are you?
My name is Joe Lucavo, I'm sorry, wasn't introduced louder. So, uh, and I appreciate the good work in business and nonprofits that my colleagues have here. But, city council's a much different place. You have to be able to work with the people that are elected, you have to work for all San Diegans, and you have to work in a very transparent public setting, and I've been doing that for over ten years. I created the results down at City Hall, because I know how City Hall works. I work with all the council offices, and I cut through the bureaucracy, whether it's environmental or infrastructure, or traffic and parking, I've gotten the results done. It's that consistent leadership and experience that really counts for this position. And over the ten years, you've elected me leadership for many of your community organizations, and the city has been appointing me to city, uh, committees and task force. That's the kind of leadership that we need. Even though I'm applying for this job as city council member, I've already been working for you for over ten years.
Thank you, Joe.
And I've gotten results, okay, thank you.
I wanna be sure that everyone in the audience knows that we've curated the questions. Each question will be for all of the candidates to answer, and they have not been given the questions in advance. So, moving first to the Town Council questions, and we're gonna start with Ray. La Jovians have jealously guarded the La Jolla Plan District Ordinance, which covers much of the village area and Bird Rock, and bans third stories. In 2006 and 2007, residents prevailed in a battle with developers who were trying to change the PDO to allow for three stories. Do you pledge to uphold the La Jolla Plan District Ordinance, and especially its prohibition on third stories?
Uh, yes, I do. I, uh, as a member of a community planning, uh, board, uh, like many of you are involved in La Jolla and this issue, uh, I know how important it is to protect the character of our communities. Uh, so I, uh, have been a leader in Carmel Valley, uh, on the One Paseo project, working closely with this, with the community to make sure that we get a good outcome on the development. And a lot of this relates back to our community planning, uh, our community plans being out of sync and haven't been updated, our processes are slow, it takes years and years to go through, and we've got to address the whole planning structure so that we can have a better outcome for our communities. But I have demonstrated my willingness to stand with the community on tough issues like One Paseo, and I would do that here in La Jolla as well.
Thank you, Ray. Joe?
Well, I've been spending ten years defending the PDO right here in La Jolla, and I was the Chair of the La Jolla PDO Committee. And I frankly have gone to public hearing after public hearing down at City Hall defending the PDO. We know, some of us know, that back in the nineties, we actually tried to do a few tweaks, and those changes never got embedded into the PDO, changes that would've made it a little bit stronger. So one of the things I commit to you, that the promises have been made over the past, um, council members that haven't delivered, I'm going to deliver for you. We know how we can fix the PDO so that it's better, we're not gonna put any three-story element in, for sure, but those little tweaks that'll make it stronger, more consistent, that'll make it easier to enforce, make it more predictable for property owners and investors, and for the residents of La Jolla, is what I promise you. You've heard that twice before, I'm actually gonna get it done. Um, unfortunately, our community plan is pretty much up to date, so we have that consistency. But we also need to do more work in the other zoning, in the other parts of La Jolla, and that is also what I've already started working with citizens about, and I'll finish when I get into office.
Thank you, Joe. Barbara?
Uh, thank you all. Um, I also commit to uphold the PDO and maintain, uh, the thirty-foot height limit. Um, and just a few days ago, I was at City Council testifying against an inappropriate project in La Jolla shores. Unfortunately, we didn't prevail that day, but I believe over the long term, we will prevail in terms of making sure that we build what's right for the character of our community. I also oppose the One Paseo project in Carmel Valley, since in my mind, it was not smart growth, there was no public transit plan for at least thirty years. And I'm very honored that many of the leaders of the Carmel Valley community who were opposed to One Paseo, like Bob Freund, are supporting me, because they view me as the person who can get things done at City Hall. Thank you.
Now, I would say probably a dozen of you in the audience sent in this question. Short-term vacation rentals have stirred neighborhood resentment throughout the country, but especially here in La Jolla, due to noise and parking problems. Owners who rent out their properties say they have a right to do so, and that reasonable regulations would solve any problems. Where do you stand on short-term rentals in La Jolla? And Joe, you go first.
Thank you. Well, I've been really in the middle of that conversation, both through as an individual and also as Chair of the Community Planners Committee, that serves all corners of our city. Just two weeks ago, we voted to say home sharing, where the owner is at home, is okay, because it's akin to a home business, but whole-house rentals, where the owner is someplace else, is not acceptable. You cannot say that you're for neighborhoods and be for short-term vacation rentals. It's a commercial activity, it has too much turnaround in time. So I'm going to oppose short-term, what is now gonna be called short-term rentals. In addition, it is an escape pod for people to bring mini motels into our single-family neighborhoods. The fact that it's not private property rights, we have regulations all the time. You want to do a garage sale, you can only do it four times a year. We all agree that there are certain amount of reasonable zoning regulations to ensure that when we live in a single-family neighborhood, it remains a single-family neighborhood. So I'm opposed to whole-house rentals, I can support home sharing. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
I put the, uh, vacation rental business into two categories. One, where you rent out a room in your house, and you're the host and you're on-site, and I'm fine with that, because that gives more options to visitors and also allows people who live here, makes it more affordable for them to live in San Diego. I oppose the short-term vacation rentals, where the house is rented out on a short-term basis continually throughout the year. Uh, that's because, number one, it takes housing away from permanent San Diegans, and second, it destroys the character of our neighborhoods. When you buy in a residential neighborhood like Bird Rock, you're not expecting to live next door to the La Jolla Marriott.
This is an issue that I've heard about firsthand, as I walk door-to-door and meet neighbors, uh, face-to-face at their doorway, especially in our coastal communities, so it's a big issue. We absolutely need, the first thing we need to do is get rid of the bad actors. We've got to deal with, uh, the problems that occur over and over. This means that we've got to increase code enforcement, so that they're available in the evenings and, uh, on the weekends. We also need to make sure that if it's a police issue, that we're properly staffed at the PD, so we can intervene where we have to. So this is a quality-of-life issue in our neighborhoods. I am very sensitive to the person, uh, the elderly person that's renting out a room, uh, to try to make ends meet. I ran into a gentleman that, uh, had lost his job, so he moved from his house to a guesthouse on the property, and now rents his house out. Uh, so I'm sensitive to those issues, and those folks are on-site. We have got to crack down on the investor types that don't even live in our community, really don't care about our community, or are just here to make a buck. So we've gotta have a reasonable, uh, common sense approach to managing that. A third of our economy comes from...
Thank you very much.
The McMansionization of La Jolla has longtime residents fuming about the loss of views and destruction of neighborhood character. Property owners who build huge homes say they're merely upgrading the town. Do you believe there should be new regulations to scale back the McMansion trend?
Thank you. I've, I've been following the McMansion trend closely, I've gone to many of the public meetings, um, and I'm honored that Sharon Wamppler, who is chairing the Mansionization Committee, is, is supporting me. Yes, it's a big issue, particularly in Bird Rock, and I do support additional regulations. I also support additional enforcement. What I've been told is that oftentimes, a certain size house is approved, and a larger house gets built. That's an enforcement issue. So we need to attack this problem in two ways, both new regulations to make sure that we build houses that are in keeping with the character of the community, and second, enforcement of our existing regulations. Thank you.
I agree, we've gotta hit the problem head-on, and again, we've got to make sure that we're protecting the character of our neighborhoods. And I commend the work that Sharon Wamppler and her committee are doing. They've still got a lot of work to do, but I'm anxious to see what finally comes out of that, and then how can we integrate that into the regulations? Because we are changing that community, and we don't wanna change the character of that community, so I wholeheartedly support additional regulation in those certain neighborhoods. And again, this does also go back to our planning process, and about how we're doing it, and the time it takes, and the processes you have to go through, and the cost associated with it. So we really need to take a good look and overhaul the community planning process, so that it's streamlined, and so that it works for our communities and our neighborhoods.
Well, once again, this is another issue that I'm right in the middle of. When the issue came up in Bird Rock, I created the Ad hoc Committee, the Chair and Chairs, and I appreciate her very, very hard work. And we're having lots of discussions about how to do that. And what we're really trying to do is really get to the essence of what the issue is, not the emotional component, but what's really going on that we really need to deal with. And the first thing that we realized is that current regulations incentivize people to build big, or to build as much as you can. And so what we need to do is, the first baby step, is to incentivize people to build smaller, make it easier for them to get the permit, make it easier or less expensive to get a permit, and, and have them make just a little bit of knockoff of what they're otherwise entitled to do. The other component is, even though our community plan is up to date, La Jolla suffers because we have generic zoning, this is a little bit in the weeds, and I apologize for that, but we have generic zoning, and then we have a community plan that's very specific to us. And the big gap between those two is where all the fights take place. So the second step that we need to do is to create new zoning that actually bridges the gap, that takes the generic zoning, and makes it consistent with the community plan. Thank you.
Okay, so, we're now gonna move to the Police Officers Association's questions. There is a national conversation concerning police accountability and enhancing transparency. How would you balance the need for police accountability and transparency with respecting law, policies, and rights of officers accused of misconduct?
Thank you. Uh, this, this is a big issue, and, uh, you know, just about any case, or any case, I believe in openness and transparency and support that. Uh, I wanna commend the San Diego Police Officers, uh, the Department for its use of body cameras, we lead the nation in that area. And that's a win-win. I just did a ride-along with Officer Miller, uh, in District One and part of District Two, and talked to him about that, and it's a win-win for the situation, because it puts the off, the officer knows that everything's being taped, and it also settles situations down on the other side. Now, uh, I do think we need to be cognizant of the privacy issues about that, uh, in releasing those tapes, uh, because the, the two instances that I was involved in had to do with mental illness or substance abuse, and I think we need to be very careful, the privacy issues there, but I'm glad we're using body cameras, so that we can clean these things up. And then there's a whole discussion about how we can improve, uh, the Citizens Review Board, and I support some of the changes that are going on there.
Thank you, Joe.
Well, let's be clear, where there's demonstrated misconduct, we have to have a zero tolerance. I know the San Diego Police Department has the highest standards, and I know they wanna pull them, and a couple of incidents in the past have been somewhat embarrassing, but they've taken care of that. Part of the challenge we have is that we, we are understaffed. Not only are we below budget, but we're actually way below what we really need to really serve a city of our size. And why that creates a problem is that you really don't have the balance between the new recruits, the mid-career officers, and then the senior officers. Any organization needs that full breadth and width, to ensure that the experience is being filtered out to the younger people. And it also has more eyes and ears going on. The other thing that we have a problem with, by not having that full staffing, if we've lost the community-oriented policing. San Diego used to be a leader in that, back ten, fifteen years ago, and by the severe cuts that we've had, we've lost that. We no longer have the ability to go out and have the officers being part of the community. The, the talk is in the police departments, that you want forty percent of your time available just to go out and walk around.
Thank you very much.
We don't, we have zero.
First, I wanna thank our police department for the great job that they do every day. They're pushing lives on the line for us every day, and we as a community should be very grateful for all that you do. I understand this is a very complicated issue now, with the fact that we have body cameras, and whether to release videos or not. I understand the privacy issues, and I think every case is going to have to be different as to when something gets released or when something doesn't. And I think we're fortunate in San Diego to have a wonderful police chief, a great department, and I'm confident that you will make the right decisions. Thank you.
Joe, I think you go next. Recently, the mayor and city council unanimously approved a recruiting and retention package for San Diego police officers. How do you propose we track its effectiveness, and if it fails to achieve its goals, how would you supplement the plan to retain and recruit sufficient staffing to meet city needs?
Uh, very important question. Well, the talk is, after six months, that it's not achieving the results the way that we had hoped. We're still getting officers that are being recruited by other agencies that have higher pay, or we have the problem where sixty, seventy percent of our police officers don't live in the city because they can't afford to live here. And so when they live in Temecula, it's gonna be a lot easier for Riverside or Temecula to recruit them, and even with the straight across pay, we're gonna, uh, save money. So, it is a bargaining issue. If we're not getting the results, we have to have the police force that serves our city. There cannot be any question about that. Public safety is job one for city government. So if it's not getting the results, then we have to go back to the bargaining table and figure out what combination of salary and benefits will actually make, meet the standards, uh, of, that keeps the officers there. Perhaps we need to do more surveys of the officers themselves, to see what would make a difference. It is a difficult issue, but public safety has to be job one. Not only do you have to be safe in statistics, but the citizens of San Diego have to feel safe themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Well, my three priorities are we need to keep our community safe, clean, and prosperous. Safe means police, fire, and lifeguards. Last year, there was an independent survey done that indicated that our police officers, particularly at the five- to eight-year mark, were undercompensated in comparison with neighboring police departments, and we, as a city, took steps to fix that. I think next year, we need to do a survey of the officers and another survey around the immediate area to see where we stand now and what we need to do to ensure that we're recruiting the best, and, most importantly, retaining them. Because the cost of training a new officer is about $190,000. So we want to keep the good ones that we train. We cannot afford to lose them. Thank you.
Police is a top priority. It's the only service that's called out in the charter, "Police Protection." It's called out in the Charter of City San Diego. So we've got to continue to make that a top priority. We've got the new five-year plan. This is a good plan, and we'll have to see how it works. We not only have issues with training and moving to other municipalities and that kind of turnover, but we've got almost 50% of our officers that are up for retirement within the next five years. So we have to be vigilant. We're understaffed now. When I did my ride-along, when I did it in 2012, and other ones, the number-one issue that officers will tell you is they're understaffed. So we need to be vigilant on this, and just like I did in my business. When we had a growth spurt and we needed more programmers, we would adjust our compensation to get them in here. So we've got to look at those market surveys. We've got to remain competitive because this is a basic right for all of you. Thank you.
Barbara, you go. I am too, but we're going to do this. Recently, there's been a discussion about altering the powers of the Citizens Review Board on police practices. Do you believe the current structure, membership, and powers are adequate? Or do you think changes are needed? If so, what reforms would you put forward?
Phyllis, that's a great question. I think there's always room for improvement in everything, but on the whole, I've been pleased with our police review board. But I think, as with everything in business, or a nonprofit, or government, it's always good to step back and look at what's working and what's not working, review the best practices in other communities, and make recommendations as to what we can do better in San Diego. Thank you.
It doesn't matter. Go ahead.
Wait, you got a minute? I have to agree too. I think the Citizens Review Board is working well. There's actually a close cooperation between the police and the Citizens Review Board. They actually are quite cooperative in terms of investigations. I think there's a period we're going through where people are very frustrated, and some of that is because of what's happening nationally, and that's also because of the understaffing and some of the tension that gets created in that. And the fact that the police are hearing over and over again very negative stories. And that, you know, even for as incredible as our police department is, they're only human, and that begins to weigh on you. And that same message is hitting those citizens, and it's getting them worked up. So I think we need to go through a period of adjustment. I appreciate the leadership of Chief Zimmerman in terms of stabilizing the force. I agree with Barbara. Any organization needs always to be looked at and refined. But on the whole, I think the Citizens Review Board does a great job. We just need to make sure they have the resources. We need to make sure the police department has the resources to do its job in the way that we want it for our city.
Recently, the Police Review Board added a new executive director, Charmaine Mosley, and she actually came before city council with some recommendations and some fine-tuning, which I think are very prudent. First of all, she wants to make sure that the board is more diverse and that it reflects the community. And I think that's a very important element to making the review board trustworthy and to keep that great communication between the review board and the community. She also wants to do more outreach, update the website so it's easier to navigate, make sure that any disciplinary action is put across evenly and consistent within the department. So I think they're making some good moves there. I don't think there requires a steady overhaul, and I think we've got good internal investigation going on with San Diego PD now. So I think we're moving in the right direction. We'll continue to do so.
Why don't you keep the microphone because you're going to answer our questions next? These are the questions that Susan DiMaggio, Light, Editor, and I came up with this this afternoon. The first one, which sort of breaks our heart because it's the same question we asked the candidates four years ago, and nothing's changed, and is clearly on the mind of many of you in the audience because you turned in cards with very similar thoughts about this subject. It has been more than five years, and the stench at the Cove is still harming our commercial vitality and our residential quality of life. Do you consider the stench the city's responsibility? And if elected, what would you do about it?
I absolutely think it's part of the city's responsibility, and I'm already working on this problem. I was invited by a number of business leaders to join in some meetings with the mayor. We've been able to have two meetings so far, and we're making progress. At the first meeting, the mayor committed to putting down the enzyme and committed the budget to putting down the enzyme twice a month versus once a month, which really wasn't happening, all that consistency, consistently. We are monitoring that now very carefully. Our next meeting will include folks from the Stormwater Department, because this is an area that may or will influence the decision. So Steve Haskins of La Jolla Emergence Association and business leaders are working on this. So I'm involved with it. I will continue to monitor it, and I will stay after it. But there are layers and layers of regulation on the Cove, and so we're going to have to navigate this carefully. But I'm very pleased that the mayor's committed, and he's committed staff time to moving this issue and resolving it, because it's a quality-of-life issue and it's an economic issue more than anything.
And Joe?
Very tough question. Another example of the city continuing to kick the can down the road, and the more they delay in terms of solving the problem, the more intractable the problem becomes. There is a very tough issue. I have advocated several years ago that we ought to start with the environmental permitting process. People said, "No, don't do that because it takes too long to do that permitting process." It always takes too long. Had we started this two or three years ago, we would have been that much further along in getting the environmental permits that might have provided a solution. But unfortunately, we didn't do that, so we're still at ground zero. I'm concerned about the mayor taking this on and politicizing it. I appreciate Mr. Ellis, who's a very smart man, is now part of the conversation, but I'm not, and neither is Council President Lightner. That concerns me. This should concern you. This isn't a win for an office. This is a win for La Jolla. We have a very tough problem. This is about marine mammals, and it's going to be very tough to solve. And I'm not going to stand here and say we can solve it, but I will tell you that I will commit to working on it when I get in office. In fact, I'm actually trying to work on it right now. But it's a very tough problem, and it's a lot because the city is delaying this much too long.
Thank you, Barbara.
I've talked with merchants, I've talked with homeowners, I've talked with tourists. The stench is a major problem. We are spraying, apparently, twice a month. I hope that somebody really is monitoring that it's really getting done twice a month, and I think it is the responsibility of the city to do this. I want to first establish an independent way of monitoring the stench on a daily basis so that we know exactly if something is working or not. Second, I want to look at what in more environmental things we can do to resolve the issue. I know it's taken a long time. I know it's very frustrating to all of us. This, to me, is not rocket science. It's something that should be able to be solved, and it would be a priority of mine to resolve this. Thank you.
Joe, you go next on this question. For decades, there have been rumblings about cityhood for La Jolla. Some LaJolians have the perception that services received do not match the amount of taxes we pay to the city. Do you agree with this statement? And as a council member, what could you do about it?
I do agree that the services received are probably less than the property taxes that we send down to City Hall. That, in fact, is what city government is all about. We pool our resources so we can serve the common good and make sure all San Diegans benefit from that. There is opportunities, such as the Maintenance Assessment District that we formed in Bird Rock, where we can take on special services and actually decide for ourselves what our priorities are. Outside of actually creating independent La Jolla, and I hope Melinda's not up here, that I don't think there's really, there is an answer. This is just a fact of what city government is, and this is part of the challenge of being a big city. Every time somebody tells me, "Why can't we be like this city or this city?" Every one of those is a small city, and it does lead you to believe that maybe La Jolla should become independent. I think there's some upsides, and I think there's a lot of downsides to that. We should be very, very careful. It needs to be studied further. Otherwise, we're going to be in the same routine, we're sending our taxes down. What I am going to do is make sure we get as much of the resources up here as possible, including the TOT taxes to help the hotels.
Thank you, Barbara.
I think, you know, I've lived in La Jolla for 25 years, and I love it here. But I think it's unrealistic to expect that we're going to have an independent La Jolla. So we have to do the best that we can as a part of the city of San Diego, which actually offers us a lot of benefits. I think we have to advocate for our fair share, given that we are a destination for tourists as well as San Diegans who come to visit our beaches, shop in our shops, eat in our restaurants. We are a place that all of San Diego can enjoy, and because of that, we deserve our fair share of the city's resources. Thank you.
La Jolla is a very, very special place, and we need to have a council member who is going to advocate and fight for La Jolla and the communities and neighborhoods, the great world-renowned university we have in La Jolla, and the wonderful businesses that we have here in the innovation economy. We've got to have someone who's going to have common-sense reform measures at City Hall, including the pension reform areas that we've already addressed, to make sure that money that we're getting from those savings are put back into our communities. But it takes someone who can navigate downtown and navigate City Hall to make sure that we are not underrepresented in District 1 and specifically La Jolla. We have a lot of opportunities, and La Jolla does contribute a lot to the city. I would not want to see La Jolla leave the city. But we've got to make sure we've got the kind of representation that can bring it home.
Barbara, you go next. It takes five votes on the city council to get anything done. So just being elected doesn't mean anything's necessarily going to happen. How will you build coalitions to effect change?
It's a great question, Phyllis. So I've lived in San Diego for 35 years. I've worked, volunteered, and lived in diverse worlds. I have a track record, a proven track record, of bringing people together to get things done. I was at the Connect Program, which was then at UCSD. We were started in 1985, '86 to launch high-tech and biotech companies. I worked with a very diverse group of people to launch programs that became the basis of creating, you know, this amazing innovation economy that we have in this town. I've served on numerous nonprofit boards. I have support across the political spectrum and from people in many sectors of this community. I know that you are only one vote on the city council and that you have to work with your colleagues to get things done. And I have a proven track record of being able to do this in many different worlds. Thank you.
Again, I feel like I'm a nonpartisan, problem solver. I have led numerous boards in the nonprofit area. For any of you that have worked on these boards or commissions, you know that to get a group of volunteers to all pull in the same direction can sometimes be challenged. So you've got to be able to navigate that. I was elected the vice president and president of the city pension board by union leaders and by appointees, including the Police Officers Association. So I know how to work with other people to get the job done. And when we worked at the pension board, we were able to get, most of the time, 11, two votes, and the two votes didn't agree anyway. But we were able to collaborate and move the needle. And I can bring that skill set to City Hall so that we can address these issues of keeping reforms going and fixing our streets and making sure we have a great water supply. And we're going to have to work together to get that done.
You know, despite what we read in the news, which like to cover the controversy, actually, the city council works very well. I actually have a track record of working with the council offices on the 10th floor and doing city business. I worked with Mark Curie in developing a new public input on infrastructure. I advised Scott Sherman when he was concerned about the medical marijuana. I helped David Alvarez when he was concerned about Maria Logan and how to form the first-ever planning groups in Maria Logan. They know me on the 10th floor. I know the staff. It's actually about cross-collaboration, finding the commonality in what the problem is, and then figuring out how to work together. My track record is actually down at City Hall. I think they're eager to work with me. I'm going to continue to work with them over the next 16 months until I get elected, but it's going to be very easy to build those coalitions. And that's what it's about. It's not only about the council member, being a good council member, but it's about understanding what the politics are. Because, you know, there's a lot of votes, and when you need a land whose vote in La Jolla, you're going to make sure your council member actually has good coalitions and good respect from the other council members.
Thank you. Dave Schwab from the La Jolla Village News has a question, which is, Carl, you get it first. Where do you stand on shared use of the children's pool?
Well, I think the plan that's in place now appears to be working. And I would read the current arrangement the way it is. This is not an issue that has bubbled up in my interaction with community leaders and meeting neighbors door-to-door. So I would vote to leave the situation the way it's set up right now.
You're next.
Well, we don't have shared use of children's pool. And for many, many years, I was part of the battle to preserve use of the children's pool. My children, I took my children, my wife and I took our children there and back many, many years ago. I was also an advocate for shared use when that was the next step in the solution. But the fact of the matter is, the seals have won. The seals have moved in. It's their habitat. The seals are not going anywhere. And it's been demonstrated over the past couple of years that unfortunately, the shared use doesn't work because there's too many visitors coming for the first time and don't understand how to relate to a wild animal. We can't have our lifeguard spending time chasing people away from the seals. The fact is, I'm no longer in support of shared use anymore. I'm about leaving that as a new habit have for seals with the commitment that we don't let seals inhabit any of the other beaches in La Jolla. The sea lions were calling to be off.
I support the Coastal Commission ruling, which has the beach off-limits during pupping season. And I think we need to put this issue behind us and move on to more important issues in La Jolla, like ensuring that we have a vibrant village, figuring out the stench, figuring out the traffic issue on La Jolla Parkway. I think we have a lot of other things we need to talk about. Thank you.
Who's next? First. I think Joe is first. Okay, I'm getting confused. Now, we're going to questions submitted by La Jolla Light readers. And a number of them, quite a number of them, asked this question. It's about the Regent's Road Bridge. Are you for it or against it?
I'm against the bridge, and I'm against widening of Genesee. The city is going through a community plan amendment to make that change. Of course, it has to go through the proper recourse and the preparation of EIR, which, again, the city is kind of lagging behind. They've kind of promised it as a going-away precedent for Council President Lightner. But make no mistake, I'm against the bridge, and I'm against the widening of Genesee. It's as simple as that.
I'm against the bridge, I'm against the widening of Genesee, and I urge all of you to hike through Rose Canyon. It is a precious resource that is, you know, only 15 minutes from downtown La Jolla, and we are fortunate to have it.
Well, this is something we all agree on. I do think we need to take a look at the traffic study, which should be coming out soon in the environmental documents to confirm the decision that we need to remove the bridge and remove the widening of Genesee off the plan. We also need to be, as Barbara mentioned, we need to be very, very careful with Rose Canyon, because those open spaces are so critical, and we continue to encroach and encroach. We do have the trolley coming through there, and that's, I know, a very controversial issue that we're navigating right now. But we've got to protect these open spaces for the future.
Next question is from the audience. Do you support AB 57 having to do with the towers that have been going up in the neighborhoods? And would you support having them removed?
I testified against the towers at several hearings over the last few months. So I am against them, and I think they should be removed. They violate the 30-foot height limit. There was no community input into their installation.
A B 57 is the state that have to comply with the state regulation and the FCC ruling, I believe it's 6409. Because there's some bad actors in terms of cities and municipalities across our country, the wireless companies have said, we've got to have one sweeping fix that allows us to do more. It's not, it doesn't really have much to do with those cell towers that have been plopped in along La Jolla Boulevard. It happens about what's going to happen next. They decided an insignificant increase in the height of a cell tower is 20 feet. We have a 30-foot height limit. 20 feet doesn't sound very significant to me. What I'm going to propose, and what I've already started talking to people about, is to tell the wireless companies, you don't want that hurt that comes along if you're going to pierce the 30-foot height limit. They haven't done it yet, but if they try to do that, they're going to regret it. And I think the wireless companies are smart enough that they need to roll out their equipment fast enough because we're data hogs, and it's multiplying by hundreds of percents. So we need to figure out that balance. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a horrible outcome for the community. We absolutely need to bring these towers down so they're under the 30-foot level. They need to be brought down. We need to make sure that we've got proper notice to our neighborhoods when something is going on like this. These things cannot just pop up in an easement that's near your home. We need to notify the neighbors and communicate to them properly. But the first thing we need to do is have the city aggressively get those towers back down below 30 feet.
Okay, Kim Mike. This is a long question. It's got three parts, so I'll read them really slowly. If anybody wants me to repeat it, I will. What should the city's plan of action be to reach the 75% diversion of solid waste in the next five years? How should it be funded? And should the public be given the opportunity to re-vote on the people's ordinance?
Well, the first part is, we've got to be aggressive about recycling to get to these numbers. And that includes making sure that we're recycling vegetation and things like that that also go into the landfill. We cannot scrape and fill any more canyons for landfill. So we've got to make sure that we've got an aggressive recycling plan going on. And I also think that we need to double up. Certainly in our neighborhood, recycling is only picked up twice a month versus every week. And we need to make sure that recycling materials are not going into the trash so that we limit that. So those would be some of the first steps I would take. As far as funding it, we've got to make sure we're doing solid reforms at City Hall. I was a part of pension reform. I was part of managed competition. And we need to make sure we're doing those things so that we're allocating your tax dollars more effectively. It's your money, and that's what we need to do. And that's how we would get the money. I think there could be a discussion about giving the citizens of San Diego a chance to vote on the citizens' ordinance. But my sense was, until we prove to them that we can be good stewards of their money, that would be a non-starter.
Thank you. Joe? Remember, what should we do? How will it be funded? And should it be able to be voted on?
Well, I agree. The hardest thing to get permitted in our county anymore is a landfill. You just can't find any new locations that are perfectly acceptable for the environmental impact. And the only way we're going to solve that is, in fact, by that recovery of recycled material, recovery of green material that can be composted and turned into more productive uses. So yes, we have to aggressively do that. It's part of what government hasn't been telling us, the kinds of things that we need to be prepared for. Most of these things take a little bit of an incentive to get the ball rolling. The government has done a very good job of making some modest investments to get that ball rolling. And then private business takes over when it actually starts making sense. In terms of the people's ordinance, boy, that's the third rail of San Diego politics, isn't it? At this point, I'm not really supporting bringing that to a vote with people. I think we have a lot more work to do in terms of really understanding where our budget is, what our revenue sources are before we talk about that. I'm still also very interested in figuring out how to finesse that because the city can actually pick up the trash cheaper than the private haulers can. And I think there's an interesting conversation to be had.
Barbara?
Well, you know, I said my priorities are, for the city council are to keep San Diego safe, clean, and prosperous. The trash issue is clean. And I want to add, I'm very proud of San Diego. Look at what we did in terms of conserving water. The state told us we had to cut back our water usage by 16%, and I believe we're averaging savings of 25%. I believe we can live up to the trash challenge and recycle more and meet the zero-waste goals. As far as the people's ordinance is concerned, at this point, we don't yet have the trust of our community in terms of how City Hall spends our money. And first, we have to regain that trust before we can go to the voters to ask for anything else. Thank you.
Joe? Would you have voted yes to spend 2.1 million on the E I R for the Chargers stadium?
No.
I don't need to take a whole minute.
Nothing more needs to be said. Give us a moment.
My answer is also a resounding no. And I put out a public statement at the time saying, we have no deal with the Chargers. Every indication we have from them is that they want to leave San Diego. And until we have a deal with the Chargers, I think spending any money on them is a waste.
Okay, so Barbara's first now. How would you vote on the June minimum wage referendum and why?
So last year, many of you probably know, our city council passed an ordinance to increase the minimum wage to $11.50 an hour in stages by 2017. I was very proud as a businesswoman to testify in favor of this ordinance at City Hall. I was very disappointed that our mayor vetoed the ordinance twice. At that time, there were six members of the council who overrode the veto. After that, a group of special interests collected enough signatures to place this issue on the June 16 ballot. I am enthusiastically voting yes on this initiative. We have thousands of working families in our community who cannot afford to make ends meet. Tourism is one of the mainstays of our economy here, and we will always need people to work at these low-wage jobs, and they deserve to be paid a fair wage.
Ray?
I do not support the local wage ordinance. I do support the wage ordinance that was enacted by the state over a year ago. The second part of that ordinance, or that regulation, takes place on January 1 of this year for over a 25% increase. The local ordinance is over 44%. We need to make sure that our businesses, and small businesses especially, and I've been there, can absorb that and work it into their business model. We need to make sure that we don't pass something in the city of San Diego that makes us non-competitive around with cities around us like Carlsbad, Poway, Chula Vista. This is a job killer. It's no consideration for youth employment and summer jobs. This is a great place for our kids to learn soft skills and start framing up the career ladder. These are starting jobs. And so I support the 25% increase that's in progress now, but I don't support the ordinance because of those reasons.
I'm in support of the ordinance, and I will be voting yes. If you're an adult working full-time at minimum wage, you should not be living in poverty. We all accept the fact that minimum wage is part of the economic reality. That minimum wage should be at a point where you're not living in poverty if you're working full-time. It's unfortunate that we could not have had a better conversation when this thing was being discussed last time, but that's the way of the old city council. It will hopefully not be the way of the new city council. And the fact is, if we don't pass it, we're going to be embarrassed because we're going to be so far behind every other jurisdiction and every other state that is passing it, up to $15 an hour. And how's that going to make San Diego look? I have more pride in San Diego and taking care of people at the low end of the wage scheme. We need to pass this minimum wage and the earned sick leave component of that. I hope you will, too.
Unfortunately, the next three questions are the same questions we asked four years ago, and again, nothing's changed. Panhandlers, and it's not an easy solution, and the intersections are a growing problem. Is there anything the city can do about regulating them?
Well, that speaks to the larger issue of homelessness in San Diego, which is growing. For the first time in many years, the count was actually up this year. And when you strip away all the issues related to this, it really boils down to some sort of substance abuse issue or a mental illness. And we, as a community, need to get our arms around this. And this is a perfect opportunity because I've worked on this issue in the nonprofit sector, to bring in philanthropy, to bring in the business community, and the public sector to address this. I think one of the specific questions, we need to have an ordinance that doesn't allow that because it's a safety issue for these people out in the medians, especially as you're coming down Torrey Pines Road. They shouldn't be there, and we need to get that moving along. But how do we take, how do we answer it? First of all, we need more affordable housing, and we've got to drive down the cost of regulation associated with that so we can get these people properly housed. And we also need compassionate leasing. We need to make sure that we have more homeless outreach teams in the city so that we can get these people into the programs that they need to turn their life around because it reflects poorly on all of us in San Diego to have this huge problem.
Thank you, Ray. Joe?
Well, I think those of us in La Jolla know there's no connection between the panhandlers and the intersections and the homeless. The homeless is a very, is a travesty, and we need to deal with that. And as Ray pointed out, there's a lot about drug abuse and mental illness that really contributes to that, and that's a much different conversation. We do need to have the appropriate regulations that are legally vetted that actually prevents that. They're a safety hazard. They're a distraction to drivers that are going by. And unfortunately, they have become a business for people that understand La Jolla is compassionate. They see somebody with their hand out, and they just want to give. But in fact, what we need to do is have that ordinance that really shuts that down. Of course, we need to deal with the homeless, and there is a whole continuum of care, as Ray mentioned, that we have to get around to. But panhandlers on the intersections, that's a completely separate problem. We just need to stop that, put an ordinance, figure out the right way to enforce that.
Yeah, the homeless situation is terrible, and I support the Housing First model with a continuum of care services around the individuals. Regarding the panhandlers, downtown has a very active program where they really educate people not to give money to panhandlers, but to put money into little red boxes, and that money goes to organizations that help the homeless. I think we could do something similar in La Jolla in terms of educating everyone in the community not to give money to the panhandlers, instead to put their money into a little red box or a green box in the village and knowing that that money would go to a vetted organization that is doing something to solve the problem. Thank you.
Traffic congestion on Torrey Pines Road just gets worse. We have employees of the La Jolla Light that are asking to work in one of the other offices because they don't want to come down La Jolla Parkway and come down Torrey Pines Road. And even on the weekends, it's sometimes grim. What would be your plan to ease congestion?
That's a great question, Phyllis. So I read that the city is planning to invest about $168 million in a new traffic light synchronization program that could be used to help this situation. And initially, they're planning to start this downtown, where I actually think the traffic lights aren't as bad as in other places. And my recommendation would be that we start this program on La Jolla Parkway, Torrey Pines Road. Listen, all of San Diego comes to La Jolla, so if we can start this great new technology here, a lot of people in our community will benefit. I also have other ideas in the summer about working with UCSD to use their parking lots and to use their buses to run shuttles for both tourists and employees so that that would also alleviate some of the traffic on La Jolla Parkway.
Another element to that is moving forward more aggressively with the Torrey Pines Road Corridor project to clean that area up and put some traffic coming in there to make it safer for residents on both sides of Torrey Pines. That project is in a redesign stage and will be finished by the end of the fiscal year of June of this year, and then hopefully move into construction in 2017. But this, all these types of things, including the light system, require money. So we need to make sure that we are doing the right things at City Hall to move it forward. Keep in mind, we have a $5 billion infrastructure need over the next five years, and we're $1.7 billion short. So we need to make sure we're taking some of the savings from pension reform and putting it into infrastructure and then making sure that we're continuing common sense, level-headed reform throughout the city so we can get this money back into our communities.
I wish I could stand up and tell you that I've got that magic solution for the congestion. We create the most popular place around, and then we limit the number of ways that you can get in and out. I think you do the arithmetic, and it's pretty easy to figure out. It was a tremendous benefit from when the throw was reconfigured. It really solved a lot of the traffic congestion there. Part of the problem that we have is we have a fairly sophisticated traffic signal system at the throw. And every time we have a fiber engine coming out and preempting that signal, it throws that whole thing out of whack. And so we need to make sure that we have city staff available that can recalibrate that. It actually has a manual override, which is kind of unusual for a traffic signal. And if you've ever been there when that signal is out of whack, oh my gosh, it is so horrific. But we have a tough time. I think we have to look at some of the more aggressive ways in terms of the kinds of businesses we have in La Jolla and what kind of employees we have, and whether we can begin to shift some of those employees and stretch out the rush hour so that we have a little bit easier time. The summertime, that's what the businesses live for. They want those people to come in. And so we're probably always going to have congestion. I'm not going to promise you otherwise.
This is a question from the audience. There seems to be an inequity in the work comp benefits between police, fire, and lifeguards for on-the-job injuries. How can you fix that?
One of the things we need to recognize is that we deal with a variety of bargaining groups and employee groups, and they're all not treated equal. They do different jobs. We know that we have a tremendous recruitment and retention issue with the fire department. We don't have that with others. With disability, we need to look at each individual group and make sure that there's a level playing field as much as we can. I can't speak to the actual disability benefits for each bargaining group, but we need to look at that on a bargaining unit by bargaining unit basis. I do not believe in the Me Too clause, and I think I'm, as far as I know, the only candidate doesn't believe in that, because we need to keep the bargaining units separate. And the Me Too clause means that we give all the benefits to all the different bargaining groups, and I don't think we should do that. I think they're different, and they have different needs and requirements, and we need to address that bargaining route by bargaining.
Even though that wasn't a question, I'm not supportive of the Me Too. I think it is disingenuous in terms of the different bargaining units we have across our city employees. For lifeguards, it's actually a fairly easy question. I think you may have read the La Jolla Light about the seasonal lifeguard that was injured and has to live on $250 a week for disability and cannot work at all. Fortunately, he's going to make a reasonable recovery. The answer is pretty simple. You don't treat lifeguards as administrative staff. You actually treat them the same way you treat public safety, which is, they get injured, they're putting their life on the line, they're putting their body on the line for our safety. You ought to have enough respect for them to share with the same level for the workman's comp as the police and the fire does. It really is that simple. We just need to do it.
Well, I think all three of us are actually against the Me Too clause. In the business world, you know, everyone is treated differently. You don't pay all your employees the same. Depends on what they do and what level of skill they have. I don't know the specifics about the lifeguards. I would like to find out what other communities do, what's fair, do research, which is what I do in my life when I encounter a new issue. So I don't have an answer today, but I would like to explore this and we'll come back to you with an answer. Thank you.
This audience tonight has been great. I know it's really getting warmer here. And I am going to be very committed to, for you to be able to have dinner before you start watching Blacklist. So I'm going to end the questions and start with the closing comments. And we're going to start with Joe.
Well, again, I want to thank P O A, the La Jolla Light, and the city council for hosting tonight. I want to thank Phyllis, who did a great job as the moderator. And I want to thank all of you for taking the time to come out and spend this warm evening listening to us talk. I think you've heard some very clear differences between the candidates, and of course, that's why the debate's born. I am the community candidate. I've always been primarily driven by the community needs, and I have the direct and clear experience that will drive my conversations when I become a
Well, again, I want to thank POA, the La Jolla Light, and the city council for hosting tonight. I want to thank Phyllis for doing a great job as the moderator. And I want to thank all of you for taking the time to come out and spend this warm evening listening to us talk. I think you've heard some very clear differences between the candidates. Of course, that's why debates form. I am the community candidate. I've always been primarily driven by the community needs. And I have the direct and clear experience that will drive my conversations when I become elected council member. I've already been working for you for over 10 years, answering your questions, giving you the right answers to the tough questions that you ask, getting results down at City Hall, working with everybody down at City Hall to get results for your benefit, not only for La Jolla, but for District One and citywide. And I'm going to continue to do that over the next 16 months. I'm looking for a job as a city council member. That's really what we're up here for. But the fact is, I'm already working for you. I'm getting results because I have the right experience and I have that consistent leadership that is driven by communities and neighborhoods. You've seen me do it over and over again. You've been good enough to elect me to a number of community organizations over the past years and the city has appointed me to a number of leadership positions. That's what I want to carry forward. I've worked part-time as a community leader on your behalf and now I'm asking for your support to do that job full-time, working for you as a city council member. I hope you'll join me. Thank you for listening. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Phyllis, for doing a great job. And thanks again for all of you folks being here. And it is warm in here, so. But, you know, I chose San Diego as a place to raise my family and start a business and San Diego is very dear and dear to my family. That's why I've spent countless hours volunteering in our community over the last 25 years. Everything from coaching youth sports in Carmel Valley to serving on the city pension board as a volunteer and helping with reforms and clean up that situation. Working on the environment through Equinox Center to making sure we have a locally controlled, drought-tolerant, and affordable water supply. Working on tough issues like that. Working on the stench already. Standing up with my community and leading on the issue of one for sale in Carmel Valley. So I have a track record and I'm already doing a lot of these things. But I could be much more effective with your support and your vote to be on city council. We've got great support from a wide range of community leaders because of a nonpartisan problem-solving approach to so many of these issues. So I'd be honored to have your vote on Tuesday.
Thank you all for coming here tonight and hanging in during the heat. I believe that the diversity of my life experiences makes me uniquely qualified to serve on the city council. In my early career, I was a business writer at the Sacramento Bee and the LA Times, and I've had stints in journalism since then, serving as the first editor of Voice of San Diego and most recently writing a column on entrepreneurship for the San Diego Union Tribune with my husband Neil. As a journalist, you learn how to do research, you learn how to ask questions, you learn how to listen, you learn how to probe, and you're relentless in getting the story. And believe me, I am a relentless lady. In 1986, I joined the Connect program almost at the beginning and we were chartered to create new high-tech and biotech companies. I've worked with diverse people to get things done. And these are the industries that are driving the future of our city. Whether we work in them directly or not, they are going to provide the tax base that are going to ensure that we can keep San Diego safe, clean, and prosperous. If I'm elected, I believe that I would be the first technology entrepreneur on the San Diego city council. And I think that's important because as an entrepreneur, I've started companies that have created good jobs. And most importantly, I've developed programs and initiatives that have moved our community forward. When I started at Connect in 1986, you could count the number of life science companies on two hands and Qualcomm was one year old. Today, we have hundreds of life science companies and industries and companies we never dreamed of. Who thought of wireless health, bio-algae, cybersecurity? Who knows what opportunities and challenges are ahead for our district and our city? As an entrepreneur, I've been able to deal with the uncertainty and create new programs and initiatives, and I would bring that thinking to City Hall. And I will be relentless for you.
Didn't I tell you we had three extraordinary candidates? They really were really great. And you all have been amazing. I'm hanging in here with the heat with long questions or short answers. And we really appreciate you coming out. We promise that next time, we'll schedule in Sherwood Hall where there's air conditioning. Remember, the primaries are in June, the election will be in November, so we are way out in front of introducing you to the candidates who want to represent you in District One. And I thank you very much. Good evening.
Good job. I love your speech. Thank you.